I think we're live. Okay.
The chairman of the planning board meeting of two, five, two thousand and nineteen at seven thirty.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes of January twenty second.
Well, hold on a minute.
Okay.
We're gonna do an advertisement.
Advertisement.
Planning board has been in need for a number of months now, this is to the general public of the town of Groveland, for the sixth member. This is an associate member and all we gotta do is apply for the planning board. And Rebecca, do you wanna take applications or what?
Yes, well, you can submit them either to Denise Tambaskey or you can submit them through our planning department.
Okay.
Okay.
And going forward, there may be additional positions available due to some people having to leave the board. So just make the public aware that we're willing to take applications and everybody come in and have a good fun time. It's a good board to work with. Engineering experience is a plus, but at the same time, if you love your town, love to see you. Thank you. Okay, the minutes of one twenty-two.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion open up the continued hearing.
Invoices, we have any invoices?
Yes, we have two invoices. There's one invoice for TEC review of Nelson Street for two thousand eighty-six dollars and forty cents. And then there's a TEC review for one ADR Center for two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
So motion.
This one says three thousand. Three thousand five twenty-six.
Three thousand, and then three thousand, then twenty-seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, so the first one for Nelson Street should be three thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty.
Yep.
Motion.
No, motion approved.
Yeah, motion approved, invoices.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second invoice. Blue standards table.
South Street.
This is South Street, okay. And this is also tech. Okay, we need a motion.
Motion.
Twenty-seven, twenty.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, continuance Nelson Street, Brad Laidos.
Motion open.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just to open and let the board know, we had a meeting with the abutters concerning the property, specifically Michelle Bridges and Michael Carty. We had that meeting on January thirtieth. It was a very productive conversation and actually led to some additional ideas on how we could help the drainage on Nelson Street in general, not just the site and the property. Additionally, the TEC's not here this evening, but they have closed out their hearing, I mean, excuse me, their comments, they have addressed all the comments that they have made. And based upon that review, I have drafted a petition in your package for review tonight if the board would like to.
Good evening, Ian McKim with Jones and Beach and Engineers again. As Rebecca said, we met with the abutter directly across the street from us. The only design change that really came out of the meeting is the addition of a diversion berm at the end of Nelson Street, at the intersection of Nelson and Salem Street. What we mean by this is Brad will be overlaying the road, just because the pavement is in poor condition in a couple areas, so a consistent overlay is. And then what we'll do is at the Salem Street Nelson Street intersection is to basically install a, over an eight to ten-foot section, is raise the pavement so it's somewhat of a rise or berm, about three inches max off Salem Street, enough to keep the water in Salem Street as it should. There's curbing all along Salem Street. Just to the west of the Salem Street Nelson Street intersection, ideally, it should collect most of the water coming down Salem Street. Due to the pitch of the road and the type of curbing that's there, during high storm events, some of that water is missed by that catch basin. So, and we saw, we had some video of that and Brad witnessed it, and I know some of the abutters did with some of the storms we got this winter so far. So the idea there is that there is a closed drainage system as you go down Salem Street. So that's really our only change is we're gonna propose that, and that'll help everybody on Nelson, flow won't be coming directly down Nelson Street now from Salem Street. Last time, the last meeting, we had discussed that we had some comments from the water, the fire department, they requested a fire hydrant on Nelson Street. So I worked with Tom Cusick with the water department, we located a hydrant right at the intersection of Nelson and Salem Street. He has approved the design, it'll be an eight-inch line coming off the twelve-inch main in Salem Street, with a plug on the eight-inch line just after the hydrant tee, so that that eight-inch line can be extended in the future. Talking with Brad, we're gonna look at, we do need to go to the water department for approval, final approval of this, is that we will look into, if the water board, the commission will let us, there may, we foresee the need that maybe we'll need to irrigate the plants, we gotta talk to the water department about that. If that's the case, there's the potential that hydrant will bring that down closer to the site, which would actually put it closer to residences, kind of in a slightly better location, but that's an addition of about a hundred and fifty feet of main. So we'll, we'll have to approach that with the water commission, but, so that'll be the only change that we foresee is potentially the hydrant location, but there will be a hydrant, which is what the fire department requested. So that's, that's really about it in terms of design changes. I could pass along the site security recommendation from TEC of fifty thousand dollars. Our, we'd like to hopefully have a discussion with the board about, the board potentially accepting a smaller amount with the line of credit for a couple reasons. Mr. Leggles, Old Town Fuel, directly across the street, Mr. Leggles is also a resident. So our hope is that with the good standing of the business involved with this application, that a line of credit of about thirty thousand dollars would be acceptable instead of the fifty. Just part of the reasoning for that too is that there is a lot of reusable material on the site, so that'll take out some of the need for some of the loam. The seed is always needed, but hopefully the board, we can have a discussion about reducing that amount, if possible. Other than that, if there's any other questions, I did drop off with Rebecca a final plan set that addresses the water department's concerns. It's just kind of a clean, full plan set that shows all the changes I've discussed, and I have them here tonight too if you guys see or discuss anything on the site. Anything?
Can you, you have a hydrant, hydrant location and the possible secondary location?
The secondary location we would think of is probably the front corner of the property, or just outside, in the right of way still.
What's the distance between those two, between the street and there?
Between, so that, between Nelson Street and here?
Yeah.
That would be...
Hundred and something feet?
Say a hundred and fifty.
Probably a hundred and fifty. Probably a hundred and seventy feet, somewhere in there.
Extension over what we currently have. Ideally, I think we'd like to keep it there, but I think if it looks, there will be some landscaping on site, we wanna make sure that is maintained. I know we'll have to talk to the water department about approving a meter solely for irrigation.
What's a typical distance between hydrants?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred, okay.
Yep, somewhere three hundred, but I believe it's five hundred feet, which, we're within the existing hydrants now, but this would, would be an improvement. We wouldn't have three hydrants spaced close together on Salem Street.
Okay.
Yeah, we're kind of just opposite side, right in the middle of the other two. It's like a hundred and twenty feet between the three hydrants on each side.
Okay, that's...
Yeah. But, well, we'll confirm that location with the water department, and I'm sure, I know, I talked to Tom. We weren't able to make last night's meeting, so the hope is that we'll go to, we'll be able to make next month's meeting. And I know he said he might have some feedback, or some other members might have some feedback from the commission. I think we got the bones on there, so.
Why do you wanna extend it more? I couldn't hear you.
The idea is that with the landscaping on site is, we'll, we'll talk with Brad and the water department, is that they would allow just a small irrigation meter.
All right, I didn't understand.
Yeah, that would be really the only reason. Right now, the hydrant is still perfectly accessible for everybody on Nelson Street.
And outside storage?
Outside storage, we would be permitted to use the parking spaces that are not required by the site plan, which are believed the requirements, three, five, or, parking required is five. So as long as we leave the required amount of parking open, then the rest can be used for vehicle storage. But again, it, it'll also be allowed, you can't have any spills of any kind.
Right.
Per the Aquifer.
Unregistered vehicles, registered vehicles?
I believe I looked at law, it's unregistered.
Unregistered.
You park at the site and then make the story.
Yep. Ideally, I mean, I foresee somebody if they have a seasonal vehicle, maybe that, yeah. But not spaced for a bunch of RVs or anything like that, yep.
Boats and stuff like that.
We'll get some water.
All right.
Is it five parking spaces or is it three? I thought it was one for one thousand...
I thought it was three.
Yes.
One for two thousand?
Plus one for an employee.
That's four of this, so it's the employees, so it is three. I can make that a correction, yeah.
Two, based on square footage, plus one per employee.
That's correct, yep, right. Yep, I agree with that.
Cause I wrote it in, but I wanted to make sure that...
Yep, and I'll make that edit on this plan for the final stamped plan set.
And as you'll notice in the decision, as well, we had discussed a lot of the construction monitoring and inspection, so that has been included. And I believe the department with the board had asked that it be done by the peer review who has performed the review for the project. So I'd agree, it would probably be TEC to monitor at those milestones that are listed and laid out in the decision.
And that's in place of a SWIP, correct, or we don't really qualify for a SWIP, or?
Yeah.
Kind of the operation manual touches on everything that he, that Peter would review?
Exactly, and then if you look at the land disturbance, stormwater and land disturbance by law, there's different crucial milestones that must be monitored.
Sure.
And then obviously, there's like rainstorm events that would need to also trigger.
Yeah, it kind of falls the SWIPs and stuff like that, okay.
Peer review engineers can also look at the road construction as well.
Well, they'll look at it as a site, an overview of the, of the site, so whatever impact the site and the roadway had on the site, I don't know if you mean, I mean, they're not watching the roadway being installed.
Yeah, there's, there's really only one section that we're proposing, a full, a full pavement section. It's an overlay except for a very small section where for some reason the pavement jutted in like a triangular shape. But, I mean, there'd be very small areas that we actually had to, you know, put some gravel down, but we have that detail on there that, and call out that as a full pavement section. But ninety percent of it's just an overlay to make the road consistent.
But they will be on site periodically, so if there is something that's out of the norm, they'll obviously call attention to it.
Cause that's, that's something that we really still need is that personnel watch the road going down and subdivisions and stuff like that.
With that, we can definitely, on those individual application mandate that.
Have you had any luck finding anybody to...
The peer review, at least some of the firms that we have, have staff that do that.
They will do that.
Yes, they will.
Okay, as long as that's going on, that's all, you know?
There's the potential too, on a day like, I mean, that paving's gonna take a day, the whole site will take a day. So the hope is that, you know, Peter, I'm sure, build that into some other inspections.
When you say the diversion berm, you mean kind of like a speed bump almost, right?
Yeah, it's, I do have a detail, but describe, it's, you know...
It's like a raised crosswalk almost?
Right, yeah, but it's...
If you were having a crosswalk, but...
Right, and the detail we kind of call, it's like a very gradual curve, so it's not enough that when you jump o, you drive over, your car's not lurching to the side, but it's enough that it'll keep... Yep, three, we propose a three-inch max between basically the valley along Salem Street and the rise, so. It's enough to improve what's currently happening, yeah, cause currently it just dropped significantly right into, down into Nelson Street.
Casualty, you guys wanna get that around, you said fifty?
So that's what that estimate that TEC provided was fifty, with the twenty percent contingency that the board likes to see.
Yeah.
So that's open for discussion if the board would like to pursue another option as Ian and Brad had proposed.
So Brad, what's the, what's the issue with the fifty?
We'd like to do a letter of credit from the bank for thirty.
Oh.
We talked to the bank and they said it was typical of the project that sounds.
And we've seen that in some of these small, I mean, I've seen on some of my projects scattered, some smaller commercial sites, it's thirty. And our hope is that, you know, there is a lot of reusable material on the site. Seat, you always gotta buy the seat, can't get, really get around that.
So why'd you do a, does it have to be a letter of credit, can you put twenty down in that letter of credit there?
I'm just, we were talking about that today, with that message, software letter, see if they'll take a letter of credit, kind of like a charity. If anything ever happens, the bank just pushes over the letter of credit, which is the cash.
Yeah.
And this site, probably when it starts, when, you know, first thing that can go up would be the wall, stabilize the site, bring, bring that hill down. And the buildings won't go on probably until after bind-up. You know, it would be foundations, slabs, bind-up, and then the buildings would go on, which would stabilize the site completely. So once it starts, I mean, it's just gonna be, hopefully within six months, complete.
Yeah, it's the nature of the site too, our hope is that, you know, it's a fairly small footprint.
It's private too.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, that's the problem, though, it's private.
I don't see any problem with lowering it, whereas on private, I'm in favor of lowering it to forty.
The base number without the, without the standard increase is forty.
Yeah.
And that's assuming they need all that loan, which they...
Yeah, it's a good...
The loom's on site.
Yeah, they're not gonna have to carry it.
Good amount.
Bring in binder any sudden? Is that us?
Would you bind it, right, just that?
For the project.
And then the buildings would...
No, but it wouldn't be. This is just an estimate for the, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, on this site too, a lot of the existing loam area is being replaced with the impervious, the building and the pavement. So there will be plenty that stockpiled, and Brad's talked to Mr. Daley, that there'll be, if he, he'll take any excess material, cause he's, he's already accepting material. But basically, I mean, our hope is that we'll be able to reuse most, everything that we are able to remove off the top layer, which would drastically decrease the cost of loam.
Would you back a plan if you need to get more?
Right.
Flavor of the board.
So when we did that, we did the test pits, there was probably a foot of loom that had to be scraped, just on the lower end.
Probably about half the site has about a foot of mixed material, good loam.
If you're willing to drop it down to forty.
Hit it down in the middle, huh?
Huh, yeah.
Get it in the middle.
Put it right in the middle, exactly.
I'm going to thirty. Because it's a private, what are we holding money for?
You're not gonna accept the road afterwards.
No.
Sure.
Yeah, you never know. Yeah, you won't be here.
Unless we get a variance for that right away, I don't know how it's gonna get accepted.
We're not accepting that anyway.
No.
And it's more important too, because it's in the Aquifer district, and it's also the stormwater and land disturbance, stormwater structures, so we wanna make sure that everything's built in accordance with the plan.
Plan.
And if TEC has built, work's been completed, and if there's future expansions, we have all that documented. So it would be important to have at least some type of charity for this to give...
The stormwater man, and it's like, that just helps us out.
Well, that's what this estimate is for, it's not covering everything.
Oh, I know, I know that, so, but...
It's just the things that we actually...
That's why I said, go to forty.
Well, let me, let me start with it, anybody for fifty? One, employees, nobody for fifty, okay. Anybody for forty? Okay, I got four, four for him.
Forty.
We won't even pick up there. Okay, so the board will want forty, okay, we're fine, sorry.
It's better than fifty. Yeah, it's better than fifty.
We're doing our job, that's all. All right.
So approved as amended? Or do we have tweaks to this?
I'm sorry?
Do we have mods to this?
I would just say approved as amended, as opposed to...
Yeah, is that the only one now, or do we have some housekeeping stuff that we can add?
I believe the, the parking, we, we worked out and everything else is...
Is that in here?
The, the parking calculation is, I had three and he had five, and I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, there was some confusion in the beginning, so.
So...
I currently have five, but it's three required.
So then we got, we got a few motions here, right, we got the special permit, and then we have the Aquifer.
We do have the two waivers, I believe those could be voted on separately, or those, I don't know, sometimes they do have to vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
I made it part of the decision, but we could do it that way.
I'd say sometimes do it, they have to vote on every...
Motion to accept the waivers listed on page four of the memorandum of decision.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And motion for the...
Do we accept them all together, or do we accept them separately? Can we make a motion to accept them all together?
Well, yeah, I'll make a, make a motion to accept for the site plan.
Motion to accept the site plan approval, Aquifer protection, special permit as stormwater management, land disturbance permit, including the draft memorandum of decision as amended to include a forty thousand dollar bond.
Second.
Should we close the hearing?
We'll close it after.
We, we close it after we accept it.
Vote on the record.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 The paperwork to endorse?
They have to modify.
Endorsing paperwork, yeah.
Yep.
Motion to endorse, and is it ready?
No, they have to modify the...
Oh, you're gonna modify that?
No, we need one final paper plan set, I'll stamp, make sure they all stamp the same date.
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So do you need one piece of paper for something, or is it just a mylar thing too?
So that was one of the questions that I, I had for the board, my apologies, is that every town does it a little differently. Do you require a mylar for a site plan, or for the special permit in the Aquifer as well, to be recorded at the registry? Do you record the plans with the registry, or do you shrink them down to eight and a half by eleven?
No, the whole plan and everything with the decision gets filed and they reference each other, so the decision has got a booking page and the plan has got a booking page.
So just the site plan?
Site plans and...
No, but we don't, we don't record the stormwater management.
No, not the stormwaters, you can, I mean, they'll take it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna record a full set of plans, they'll take it.
Just the site.
We've run into it, so the site plan, yeah, what you did.
Site plan and the memorandum of decision once again.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Just make sure you cross-reference, throw a blank.
Oh, yeah, yep, I got it.
To cross-reference them, cause we've had that for years, where you go, when I see the memorandum, with the plan going.
Right, so you can only see it on the card, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Rebecca, you wanna brief us on three oh one?
Yes, so for three oh one Main Street, the applicant has received three cost estimates, the three cost estimates for engineering peer review for the project from Camet, TDC, and Stantec. Originally, TEC stated that they might have a conflict of interest with one of the surveyors, but there is another surveyor who will be able to review the bond, so they had submitted an estimate to the applicant as well. The applicant had chosen TEC, that decision was made just this week, so they were not able to provide a review. There's a client authorization in your package for vote, TEC said that they would be able to provide a initial review of the project on the nineteenth at our next meeting. The one thing I did wanna point out to the board is that under site plan review, we only have sixty days from the date that the application was signed.
An extension.
And it is actually going to expire on February seventeenth prior to the February nineteenth meeting. So I would request and recommend that the board keep a continuance, so that we may hear this in the timely graduating.
All right, so, so we need a motion to open up the hearing, request a ninety-day extension, and get that out of the way. You, did you submit a letter to the board, can you write one for the board?
So what do you want to write on?
I have a full one.
Okay, let's, let's come out of the way. So motion to open up the continued hearing for three oh one Main Street.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then from the briefing from Rebecca, we need a ninety-day extension, yes, Rebecca's got a form, if you can fill that out. And then acceptance of paperwork is next.
So ninety days from today's date?
Yeah, from today or from the day of the...
So it, we only have sixty days to hear, to issue a decision, and that'll take us to February seventeenth. So we could extend it and for then the next meeting, the following meeting. You had said the last time you did April, April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, you, so I don't know what the typical...
Can you go ninety, cause we're just starting.
Okay.
We have the hearings, and then we don't have to do this again, if we get it done before then, it's fine.
Okay, we're going, what, ninety-day extension requested from today's date?
You can, we'd go from the drop dead date.
Seventeenth.
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 Which is a Sunday.
Okay.
Okay, can I just, I need to provide admission. So this is the survey from a TDC for the two ninety-three Main Street. Okay, can I just provide admission, so this is the, the survey from a TDC for the two ninety-three Main Street and, uh, for the driveway, so the driveway.
TDC didn't perform a survey on the property.
Is that one, okay, whatever, from the, from the two ninety-three, I mean, it's a survey.
So that's what Norwood Insurance?
Yeah.
Apparently Norwood Insurance had a, had a surveyor out there, I don't know if this is, in fact, what happened, these are just markings that are on the pavement, nobody has given us any information or any.
Point of order, do we have the extension done?
Uh, I'm just coming up the date right now.
Alright, so, hang on, let's get.
I don't wanna get into something until we get the extension done.
Yeah, and then we have to continue anyway, so.
I forgot the calendar.
Uh-oh.
Thirty, we took this to eighty.
There are, look at it.
Oh, so cute. So it would be the May twenty-sixth, we'll take us ninety days out.
Okay. So, can I inform you, what was the date?
May twenty-sixth.
Five twenty-sixth.
Yep. Why did I say that?
So it's just saying you have the project, that's the extension and this is the signature.
Yep, yep. Cause he is, uh, fifth. Okay.
Okay, so you have presented to the board a ninety day extension request to May twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
You making that motion?
I am.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
Okay, all favors say aye.
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 So the extension approved.
Extension approved.
Okay, and then the next item was, we're approving a contract?
The client authorization.
Okay, so motion to approve the client authorization for TDC peer review.
Second.
All favors say aye.
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 Okay, any other paperwork?
Uh, I just need Jim's signature on that.
Yeah, okay, that's a vote, right?
On the, on the client authorization.
Oh, okay, do we have, um, the applications and fees and all that stuff paid, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all set, so then we just need a motion to continue next week?
I, I, I have no other outstanding items on this.
Yeah, we gotta wait for these guys to come over, so, motion to continue to February nineteen?
The, yes, February nineteenth is the next year.
Nineteen, okay, will they be ready, do you know?
Yeah, we should be.
They're starting this week, so they should be.
Okay.
So they could be ready, yep.
Alright, well, we'll get some news anyway, so, okay, so motion.
All favors say aye.
Aye. Okay, okay.
I'm good.
I have, uh, the.
What, what's, what's this, that's, that's nothing for us right now.
Okay, okay.
Alright, we, we can't do anything with this right now.
So, so this is the survey, once he finished the survey, they put it in there and, uh, there's some on the street, on the driveways, and this is the show where the borderline between the.
Yeah, but your engineer's gonna figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just, I just said propose to this TDC and the result will be this, so I propose to the, to the board is since we already know this result. And the survey, you can ask the two ninety-three for their survey, but we'll show the same thing, so since this was very simple, I mean, it's a project, I propose to the town. Is it possible I can donate a thousand dollars to the town to exchange to waive the, their review? Because I feel this is a so simple project, I mean.
No, no, to answer your question, no.
You're running, you're running on a thin line, I can tell you right now, that, that's like a bribe.
No.
And no, not taking.
Oh, I thought this is good for both, I mean, it's good for town, but for me.
Yeah, we got you set up for the nineteenth, we'll see you then, bring you in later. Okay?
I don't know where you come from, but we don't do that here. Don't, don't ever bring anything up like that again.
Okay, uh, next up for Sunset.
Oh, yes, so DeHulu's not here tonight, right?
So, trying to accomplish, I guess, is a. Totally acceptable. So they dropped off some copies today, I guess.
I have the copy there, maybe.
So isn't this gonna change? Nope. Oh, do you have this point?
The roadway will.
The as-built.
The as-built is, is here.
Well, that's gonna change.
Do you like that it's not on this, is the fence?
Sure.
That I showed.
No, 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 the, the as-built's gonna change because the hydrant's gonna move, so.
But if the hydrant's gonna move.
Yeah.
But the road acceptance.
The road acceptance will be the same right away, right? Yes. It's changing there, no reason, no, no, okay.
So my only caution with the roadway acceptance is the fact that, as we all know, we don't really have rights to the hydrant at the, the current time.
Alright.
There is a, uh, the gentleman who owns the property at Five Sunset, Steve Baker, has submitted a letter that's in your packets and he would actually like that red, letter read into rec, record, excuse me. He is unable to be here at tonight's meeting, but does want it to be documented, his concern in the fact that he has stated now that he will no longer, um, entertain easement on his property for the town to access the hydrant.
Uh, did he supply the pictures too?
I'm sorry, oh, no, um, the water department went out today and, and estimate on what it would cost for us to move the hydrant from the, his property into the planting strip where it was originally proposed and should be. And make sure that it didn't have any impact on the water quality or the service lines that were already, um, a, a, at the location.
Okay, so they're going into the planting strip, not, they had a.
That's correct, there was talks about whether or not they could move it right onto the edge of pavement, um, however, it just didn't make sense and it should be out on the planting strip, it'll just be easier and, and where it should be. So the estimate, so it's the, they said it was seven and a half feet off of, from the right of way, but the valve for the shut off was right on the right of way, so it would make a lot of sense for them just to move it into the planting strip. And that would cost about ten thousand dollars and that includes the patching of the roadway, includes the patching of the driveway, uh, for the individual, and it also includes the, um, restoration to his property. Cause that's the lawned area where the hydrant currently is, so the estimate, um, put forth by the, um, water department includes all of those. And it would be either up to the developer to, um, complete that work and if the developer does not, then it is a recommendation of mine to have the board withhold that money from the bond.
So first thing we gotta do is accept the February four letter from the Bakers, uh, into the record.
Alright, let me, I'm gonna read it into the record, okay? Okay, uh, addressed to Rebecca Oldham, Steve Baker, Five Sunset Circle. Dear Ms. Oldham, I am writing to inform you as well as the planning department of the town of Groveland. That after careful review and consideration, my wife and I have determined that it is not consistent with our best interest. To allow the fire hydrant that was wrongly placed on our property at Five Sunset Circle, Groveland, to remain in its current location. At this time, we will no longer consider entering into an easement agreement with the town of Groveland or the developer Wallace Capital. Both of whom were involved with the oversight of the improper installation and the fire hydrant must be moved. We would like to formally request that the planning department work with the necessary third parties, including Groveland Water and Sewer Department. To develop a plan to have the fire hydrant relocated without impacting the water quality to the neighborhood and that this plan be implemented as soon as possible. But certainly within a hundred and twenty days. We request that we be notified two weeks prior to any work being performed on our property. This notification should include a detailed list of any and all work that is to be completed as well as a timeline for the work. Further, any and all parties who may be working on our property must provide written documentation that they are bonded. And insured to take part in such work before they commence any activity on our property. We look forward to the planning department and developer taking the appropriate action to remedy this matter in a timely fashion, but also wish to inform you. That should this matter not be resolved, we will take all necessary and appropriate legal action to ensure an appropriate resolution. Steve Baker. My suggestion is that this thing go to the water department and, um, they take charge and we'll take, we'll take the money, ten thousand, to get it done. Any, any other comments from the board relative to the letter and relative to the situation?
No, this is a good, that'll correct the issue with that, that's been brought up a bunch. What exactly is the applicant in here tonight to do?
Trying to get the roadway acceptance, uh, voted into their town.
So, okay, so back to a point of order question, can we accept at this time, um, a plan for roadway acceptance if we know within a hundred and twenty days, whose town meeting?
People.
We overlap that, we gotta make that, um, to get this correct. And do we have any other timelines, Bobby, with, uh, once you rip a road, do we have to wait? Or do we just hold a maintenance bond or what do we do?
I don't know, I don't, can we still hold a bond after we accept the road?
Yeah, maintenance bond, but it's gonna have a time limit on it. It's, you know, it's only basically the road sells or something else.
See, I don't know if, I don't know if they're gonna accept it this year.
Alright, so, the town, right.
Doesn't make any sense to me at all, but the, but the bond covers the work that the fire had.
Yeah, but if we accept the road, we have to release the.
Right, then the work's gonna be in the way.
Yeah.
That's, that's my only question.
I think the bond covers the road, I mean, this, this guy waits for a year, he's.
But I think proper protocol is we, we release the bond except for the ten thousand until road, until it's road acceptance. But will the town, should we vote for road acceptance at this board knowing that we got this project out there? Now, I'm all for a maintenance bond, but I, I'm just worried about town meeting, end of April, is this gonna, will we get heavy snow, what, coming up, whatever?
I was there talking to the water department today and he says, uh, major project.
Yeah, it's, a couple days worth.
So a couple of issues in the town.
So, so the only thing that we're gonna have to worry about is the road.
Right, which technically if we're taking the ti- if we're taking the ten thousand to do the work, that covers the road.
Alright, so, back to the chicken before the egg situation here, which.
We could get more information from the water department in terms of the timeline, we're also looking at the letter, they've requested that they be required, they have to get the warrants in by March fourth. So you're, you're really cutting it close on the deadline and again, as my professional experience, my only caution to the board is that it, it, it is a liability issue to have, um, a roadway where we don't have. Access to crucial infrastructure for safety mechanisms, um, so I, I, I.
What about fall town meeting, when is that, do we have a date?
I don't know if there's special town meeting, I, I thought it was only April, the annual, not.
April, the annual, but.
Yeah.
And it could be called a special town meeting, I'm not too sure.
They always do, they call it for something.
But I, I am.
Not, they won't call it on this.
Yeah, they're not gonna call it just for that.
No.
No, no, not just for that, no.
Yeah, but I, I mean, they've been leaning away from special time meetings because it costs so much.
Yeah, it does, yeah, I agree.
If we retain, uh, there's sixty-five left, if we retain fifteen thousand and.
That's what I was thinking, hold, hold, hold a little more than the ten thousand, hold fifteen and.
Board members, you've got ten until road acceptance plus fifteen, you're up to twenty-five, plus a maintenance bond, okay, which is typically seven rail, is what we've been holding for maintenance.
Why are we holding a maintenance bond?
Because of the road settles after.
No, but that's what they're saying, the fifteen.
That's what we've been working.
The fifteen is for the.
The extra five beyond the ten, no, because the ten is all it needs to do the work.
Right, but then we have an overage, okay, so you have ten, I mean, we have an actual cost estimate, okay, you always had an overage on that, it's twenty percent, whatever that is, okay, to get the project done. Then we have ten thousand we hold anyway, okay, and then you gotta hold something for a maintenance bond, so, so you're looking at fifteen, twenty-five, sixty, what we're holding?
Sixty-five.
So if you hold thirty, you got everything covered and if it gets done before that, then you cut it loose.
Are they providing services at Sunset or is the town picking up trash and paving the roadway currently?
The town is plowing the roads, yeah.
So the town has essentially taken responsibility for the roadway without it being accepted right now, so what is the.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
It's no difference.
Rush on trying to get it done for, right now.
But at least if it's late again to, to get the bond, it's.
So it's for the bond money, not necessarily for the roadway, so if we're releasing the money for all the work that's been completed thus far, except for fifteen thousand dollars, he's got sixty-five thousand dollars, so he's got that remaining money to be released. And we're holding the fifteen thousand just for the hydrant and that work, he's still getting a majority of his money back for four.
It would still be twenty-five because we still have to hold ten for the as-built.
Yeah, but to ten for the as-built to the town, yeah.
So.
So, and then if you do the overage, I mean, pick a number between twenty-five and thirty, you got it all covered.
Let me ask this, I mean, the, the right of way, okay, does anybody have a problem with the right of way of this?
Well, you guys went out and did all the inspections, obviously, digging in the right of way.
I don't know what's wrong with that. Right of way is fine, right of way is.
So, yeah.
So if we didn't have to move the hydrant, we'd be set.
Right. Right.
Yeah, because they did everything else.
They do, so, and who knows, just, only because this project had a few strange things pop up, we got an estimate based upon a normal relocation of a hydrant. And if all this work was done correctly in the first place, it wouldn't have ended up in the guy's front lawn, so do we know that everything's a hundred percent there and may not just cost a little bit more if we have to move something or something pops or, I'm just trying to cover.
I mean, the, the way they're relating is literally just throwing in a straight stick of pipe at the bell.
Might be a burden to the legal issue of having the, of, of the hydrant, so would the board.
Hold twenty-five.
Would the board be amenable to trying to seek town council, um, opinion and reviewing it at the February twen- uh, the nineteenth meeting?
When did you say warrants have to be in March fourth?
By March, March fourth, cause that's the only thing, like you just said, the roadway, i- it's just the hydrant makes me very nervous to accept a roadway with the hydrant issue.
March fourth, I think that's. Right, so don't accept but release, so it's.
It's personal property, it's the gentleman's property, it, how do we?
So, so really, we don't have anything to endorse because we just have to release and dump, is basically what we're doing, is that correct? Or release to somewhere the bond charity, so, motion to release down to somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. To get this hydrant done, hold ten for the, for the as-built and for the, um, right of way acceptance, the land and the roadway. And everything else that needs to be done and that gives you thirty-five on a release, roughly, we go to thirty.
And that's one other issue, uh, we do need to vote on the, a list of outstanding items again, as it was not properly noticed on the agenda when it was voted in on December eighteen.
Okay, so correction for that is just relist those four things or just vote again.
I, I would advise that the board vote again so that we do not violate open meeting law.
Yeah, because we did it under old business.
They weren't specifically listed.
I questioned that, weren't we talking about it, it wasn't on the agenda, but okay.
Well, the discussion could have ensued, a vote should have never happened.
Wallace was correct as far as I, I, sorry, Wallace was correct.
The fence is leaning, they gotta fix that.
They did.
Okay, alright, we'll just move on, okay, so what do you wanna do?
Do we have to list what those were?
They fixed it, poured concrete and everything, today.
Yes, I, 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 I'll go by them.
Why don't you do it one by one?
Yes.
Yep, I'll go.
They did.
Well, now we can cross the hydrant off.
Oh, good, that's good, well then, yeah, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five, yeah. Yeah, twenty-five. Yeah.
You're saying hold twenty-five.
Yes.
Ten for the as-built.
It was forty.
All right.
I think it's even higher to move the hydrant. Yeah. I'd like to do that job then.
So one street light there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other one.
That's all it is.
That's it, all right, and that's it.
Yeah, okay, one street light, two people, okay, got it.
It's there.
Yeah, also two around.
I see, I see one street light.
Right, one's there, and then we're gonna put another at the end, the transformer, that's next up, roadlight thing, you guys get that, they usually put it there.
That hasn't been put on the asphalt.
All right.
So what I have on the, ready to be put on the asphalt is the location of the fence.
Okay, yeah, comes right out the transformer, then just put it right in the sand, pull up, done.
So something tells me if I talk to Mr. Wallace, maybe we have this fire hydrant that needs to be removed.
Yeah.
He'll get right on it. I noticed today that the fence people were, were there.
Good, oh, that's good.
He's gonna do it, or is the water gonna do it?
Well, we could hold the money, and if they make the move to do it, then we can release the money later.
I mean, the water department gave him ten thousand dollars, he probably could do it for five thousand dollars or whatever, or even.
We hold the money, and if they get out there and they do it, and they show us that they did it, and they provide as-bills that they did it, then we release the money later, but we still hold the money.
Right.
Right.
As long as he.
'Cause the water department's not getting out there before.
As long as he contacts the water department, so some of their people can be there.
Well, they're gonna have to.
Well, some things have happened in the past.
No, but the water department has to be able to shut off the water for them to do it.
Do you have an engineering record on this?
Camet was their peer review engineer.
Yeah.
Uh, from what I'm told in the past history.
No, I know, but the, I mean, the water department has to be known, shut off the water.
Yeah.
If he was, if he wasn't.
Tell him he has to come.
So who's reviewing the as-built in the, in the water?
I, I've talked to Camet, but they said not to submit it to Camet for review.
As well as that resident, if he does decide to do the work, the resident. Do you have a copy of this letter?
So we gotta get somebody to do that. Do we have anything in the surety?
No, as far as the water, the water department.
Do we have money in the sureties for it? No, I'm, I'm talking this one, the as-built and the.
Oh, oh, I see.
The only thing we have is sixty-five thousand dollars on this project, that's the only, not all of it.
That's the only thing we got, so you back the thirty boys, and girls, 'cause, uh, we gotta get somebody to review these, we don't have money in the engineering review.
Is that?
That's, that's been done.
Yeah, they reviewed that, none of that's changed.
He's done what Camet told him to do.
Who changed, who reviewed this?
Camet.
Camet.
Okay, so the road fee acceptance plan has been done.
It's been done, yeah.
The as-built, which is gonna be a tweak.
Camet reviewed them on February eighth, two thousand eighteen, and submitted comments. That is a result of those comments.
Right, and now we're changing it.
They have not checked them since then.
Right, okay, so, okay, my point is that that's a year ago, this is gonna come up for the vote, we've got two plans, gotta be reviewed, 'cause we got changes definitely to one of them, um, who's reviewing?
So you have Camet's peer review list.
Right.
You have the plan, anybody can do it with minimal technical.
I don't, I don't think it'd be a lot, that's, 'cause you're just gonna check those things, so, but we don't have one, so, and we don't have surety, correct?
We only have that.
So we need to hold thirty, that'll take care of everything, 'cause that's not gonna take much to do that, but if somebody's gotta review it.
Release forty, keep twenty-five.
Yeah, that's plenty, that hydrant's big.
I'll make the motion to release forty and keep twenty-five.
I second it.
What are you gonna do about the?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Next thing, um.
You vote aye.
So what are we doing with the engineering review?
It will be part of the twenty-five, we're holding.
All right. So, that's it? We're done?
And then if you.
Uh, we gotta vote on this a bit.
So if Mr. Wallace does decide to do this work himself, he has to notify Rebecca, the water department,
Yeah.
and the resident.
Yes.
Are you gonna be doing it?
I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna run it by him and say, hey, look at that, it's like ten thousand dollars, if he, if he says let him do it, I'll go back, Rebecca will.
No, fine, I just, I mean, if he does decide to do it, just please have him follow the letter, notify the, about, I mean, the owner, two weeks in advance, and tell him what he's gonna do.
Yeah.
Before, that's, so we're asking for, 'cause we don't want anything to come back on us again.
I'll forward him that letter and say we have a vote.
Please.
Want a copy?
Exactly.
You wanna copy the letter?
I'll take that.
Yeah. The water department. And the water department. Yeah, have the water department inspect it before they backfill, then we can get a release from the water department, be fine, okay?
And, do you wanna ask us to go between to make sure you get notification, 'cause if she gets notification,
Yes.
you know, who got notified within the two weeks in the water board, like, who's gonna be out there, you know, that sort of thing?
No, definitely.
That'll save a lot of problems.
Yeah, no, have the water department inspect it before they backfill, then we can get a letter from the water department saying they're out there and everything, it'll be fine.
They, they have performed, uh, the, the sketch was there, the photos were there, the.
Right, right, exactly.
It's very simple, it's not.
No, it's, it's simple.
Yeah, it's like nine thousand, I think, sometimes, nine thousand something on the pole.
All right, so, is that our list?
All right. All right, we're gonna revote on the list of, um.
Outstanding items.
Yeah, well, we, we're gonna do, I'm gonna do all, all, uh, nine of them.
Add the hydrants back then.
Um.
We're gonna do all nine together?
Yeah, well, no, you, no, if, no, can I do it individually?
Or individually? Okay.
Okay, number one, was addition of ripper out of stone and provide flare-in section at the overflow piper, that was completed.
Motion accept.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, yes, number two, adjust position of monuments.
Motion accept.
The less side curve entering the roadway from Salem Street, okay?
Is that done?
All done, all of them are done.
Okay, so let me make a second.
Second.
Did it just sink?
Okay.
Did it sink?
Number three, add a six-foot vinyl fence.
It was, it was off, I know, beginning.
Carpet turf along the property lines in the vicinity of Tony Jordan's property on the sketch.
And correct the fallback, the lean back.
Um, motion to accept.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, number four, revise the road grading to provide positive drainage slope towards all the catch basins. Motion accept.
Motion accept.
Okay.
Second. It's all good.
Okay. Prepare deeds plans to create an easement relative to the land in the vicinity of the fire hydrant.
Nope.
Okay, this is.
Motion to strike, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Strike motion. Motion. Okay, give me a, give me a motion to strike the motion, okay?
So motioned.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
I think we have a crazy symmetrisory, huh?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, two, three, four, okay, number six, add street lighting at cul-de-sac as per plans.
Motion accept.
What's on your name?
So.
Second on the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Number seven, lemonade one tree from the right-hand side of Sunset Circle at the top of the hill within the darkness street right of way, the motion.
Motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay, number eight, uh, thatch alone three inches and seed all three lawns, okay, I need to have a strike motion.
Motion to strike.
Strike. Motion to strike.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
The homeowner at Five Sunset Circle has, uh, contacted the planning department specifically about that motion, uh, for that particular item, does not agree with removing it, and believes that it is a problem that should be addressed.
I'm with him.
And that is just his opinion, as he has shared with me, he is, again, was welcome to come to attend tonight's meeting, who was unable to, he asked for the, um, memo to be read into record, I did invite him to come to the, the following meeting on February nineteen to express his concerns as well, but since he's not here and we are motioning, I did wanna make sure that you are all aware that he did contact our office, and he was, um, uh, did not believe that that should be taken off those.
Motion to hold?
No, motion to.
We already did a strike motion.
Yeah.
What's the brand name?
Okay, so it's, you're, you're holding, and, okay, so it's four to one, one a. Okay. The lots were sold, well, okay, new owner was Steve DeHulu, okay, we contacted Steve, I've done it personally, I told him, you know, that he's gonna have to get together with the homeowners, that's all.
Oh, what'd he say?
If the problems are still there, and figure out a way to take care of those lawns, that's it, okay? Wallace Capital sold those.
No, I get that, but that's new.
Yep.
Info, so, so we can invite Steve in, with this guy in the nineteenth, and they can.
I invited him to, to attend, he has not returned an email, however, if he, um, does get back to me within enough time to notice it on the, uh, agenda, I will definitely add it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I, I've just passed along to him that he's got to talk to Steve DeHulu on this matter, because for the simple reason, prior to, of Steve Baker buying his house, his lot, the land that he sits, his house sits on was sold to Steve DeHulu, he's dealing with Steve on that matter, not with Wallace Capital, Wallace Capital got completely out of it at that point.
We can, we can discuss that at a later date, it was just.
All Wallace Capital, they know it was the right of way, and that's it.
It's just a matter of, of point of record to make sure that we voted on those, especially when we are, uh, advertised it for the roadway acceptance, we accepting the roadway, or to reduce the bond, we should make sure that we had done, addressed those items in open session, so that was the intent to address those again.
Okay.
Number nine, prepare deed to grant the fee on the roadway as part of the roadway acceptance to the town of Groveland.
I just literally got an email from Mr. Hart.
Motion to accept.
I haven't read it, however, but.
Well, we're just accepting the fact that it's still on the list, not the actual deed itself.
Okay, I need a second.
I don't know if you have to do that any longer, do you?
Yeah, for town meeting?
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
With the three in the road, that's what it's all about, so, can I ask who's going to be back to the comments on this, so I know when to prepare the my line?
Yeah, so who's gonna look at it?
You, any, anyone of, I can walk you through every, everything that Camet's comment on.
We have Camet's comment letter, just backcheck it against this, like, I could do it.
My ability.
I'm just saying, I, I legally am a professional engineer, I could do it.
Yeah, Lisa.
I can do it, I just need Camet's comment, and I don't have Camet's comment letter anymore.
Um, it's probably in the backseat of my truck somewhere.
No, it's in my recycling bin, so it's, God knows where it is now, but.
Backseat of my truck, Fort Lauderdale.
File, file again.
Yeah, backseat.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, where were we?
Uh, that was it.
Well, that, that's the next thing, so.
This is all set then?
The nine.
No, no, old business, that just gets us in trouble.
So.
There is a change in the road acceptance.
All right, so we got everything with sunset, we're done with that?
Yep.
Okay. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
So I'll, I'll put everything through Rebecca, so she'll contact you. A second.
Don't forget, everybody, you know, there's a six seat still available, keep those cars alive.
Couple more, too.
Yeah.
And two more.
And two more. Do we vote on that?
We did.
Okay, thank you for watching, good night.
When we did the last, last year, town council said we didn't have to do something, I can't remember what it was.
Town council said we didn't have to do something?
I just reported application February, uh, nineteenth.